Good evening. Welcome to all of you here and those joining us virtually on Zoom. Western Middle School Soil Remediation Project Public hearing. My name is Jonathan Sopranowitz and I'm the Director of Communications for Greenwich Public Schools. A recording of this public meeting will be available on the district's YouTube channel tomorrow. And all corresponding handouts will be available on the district's website. First, I'd like to introduce our panelists up on stage and joining us virtually. First, GPS Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Tony Jones. Joining us on Zoom is Western Middle School Principal, Mr. Gordon Feinstein. From the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection Remediation Project Manager, Mr. Jeffrey Wilcox. From the United States Environmental Protection Agency, Project Manager, Ms. Catherine Woodward. From the Engineering Consultants Langdon Incorporated, Principal Vice President, Mr. Jamie Barr. And Senior Project Manager, Mr. Ryan Wallstrom. And from Engineering Consultants AECom, Senior Environmental Manager, Mr. Patrick Haskell. Also, in our audience today, we would like to recognize members of our Board of Education and Greenwich elected officials. Could you please stand up so we could recognize? Thank you. We hope you were able to attend the open house in the gym across the hall for the past hour and there to meet some of these folks and have meaningful conversations. The rest of the evening will be broken down into three parts. First, we will hear opening remarks from some of our panelists. Second, we will watch and listen to project presentation. And finally, we will open up the floor to you, the Greenwich community, to give you a chance to express your thoughts or concerns or ask a member of the panel a question. If there is a signup sheet in the back of the room, please make sure you have written your name so we know to call on you. For those joining virtually, for public record, you may add your comments or ask questions in the Q and A on your screen. We now welcome Dr. Jones for her few opening remarks.
And I'm going to keep this very short and actually just say thank you very much for being here tonight. A very special thank you to all of those who submitted comments. We were just talking about the volume and how pleased we were that so many people took the time to write and share your thoughts on this project. So, thank you very, very much. The comment period will stay open after this meeting. I know you'll hear that probably more than once tonight. So, it's not too late to make comments if you chose not to speak publicly on the microphone tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. We will now welcome Principal Feinstein virtually for a few opening remarks.
Hi, everybody. Thank you, Dr. Jones and all the panelists who joined us today. As I've waited six years for this meeting, it is killing me not to be able to be there with you in person. I had unexpected surgery the day after Christmas, which I'm still recovering. And no, I did not fall off the roof while delivering toys as some eighth grader suggested on Christmas Eve. If I could be there, I would. So, instead, you get this big head up on screen and for that, I apologize. I want to take a minute and thank your representatives from the environmental agencies for coming here this evening. Also, I want to thank Langdon, who's been on this journey for us for the full six years, and AECom for helping us to get to what I hope is the finish line. But mostly, I want to send my gratitude to the Western community for their incredible support and patience during these past six years. On the first day of school in 2016, the start of my fourth year as principal, our fields were closed in an abundance of caution. But contaminants were discovered. I'm now closing out my 10th year here and the same field is still inaccessible. I have a unique perspective, having sat in on many of the meetings between the environmental agencies and our partners as they hashed out the plan that will be presented today. So, better than most, I can appreciate the effort and the progress that has occurred over these past six years. But to our students and families, that doesn't matter. What they saw was a fence, unchanged for over half a decade, keeping their kids from adequate and equal access to safe playing surfaces. Two full cohorts of Western students have gone without access. Parents watched as their children were shipped to Tuffle to play softball, Pemberwick for field hockey, Straza for baseball, Cosco for soccer, any patch of grass we could find for track and field. Throughout this time, they have trusted the process, hoping that we will get to where we are today. So, here we are on the verge of actually getting permission to put a shovel in the ground. So, here is my ask on behalf of the community. Let's get this started. No more delays, no more tests. Please note the support that you see here and that I have read in the dozens of letters that Dr. Jones referenced as well. I beg of you to feel the sense of urgency that these letters and in this room and to make this happen. Let's turn what has been a trying experience into an opportunity to build the state-of-the-art field that this town and community deserves. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Principal Feinstein. And finally, we welcome Mr. Wilcox for a few opening remarks.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Jeff Wilcox. I work in the remediation division of Department of Energy Environmental Protection and Project Manager for this project for the past number of years. I work with a number of other people at DEP in our PCB unit and with US EPA, and we've all worked with the town, the engineers to complete the investigation and come up with this remedial plan. I'd like to thank everybody for attending, both those of you who are here and those who attended virtually. And I'd also like to thank all of the people who have provided comments to date on the remedial action plan. I just want to have a few brief remarks on the whole public notice process. I have an understanding of kind of how it works and what's going to happen. Because the school's remediation is being performed under one of the Kennedy remedial programs, there is a requirement to provide public notice to the public and an opportunity for the public to weigh in on what they think of the plan that's been noticed. This plan was noticed back on December 16th. And the public comment period is open until the 17th of January, 11:59 PM, 17th. Seventeenth. So, if you haven't commented and would like to, please do by that time. If you have commented and you see something here tonight and want to provide an additional comment, please do. We're looking to get all those comments in because they're part of the process that DEP goes through in evaluating the remedial plan that was put forward. What does the community think of the plan? What will happen with all the comments is they'll be provided to the town and the town will then have the requirement, I should say, to, within 30 days, provide DEP a response to all the comments that have been received. We can accept the comments. We could ask for modifications. We could hold a formal public meeting to have the opportunity to go through to have people provide comments again. At the end of all of that, everybody who submits a comment, particularly if we can trace it back to you, you know, through an email or a letter or something, and even the verbal comments tonight, we'll take it up. You'll be provided with a copy of the response, the response to the comments you provided. Each one of you will get that. I don't really have much else to say other than, please, put your comments in if you haven't already and look forward to getting those.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. We will now ask representatives from Engineering Consultants Langdon to start the project presentation. Ryan?
Thank you, Jonathan. Hi, everyone. My name is Ryan Wallstrom. I'm an environmental engineer with Langdon Engineering. Before getting into some of the details of the site assessment and proposed remediation activities, I'm going to provide a brief overview of site setting and some key considerations for this project. So, we're all here because when Western Middle School was constructed in the 1950s, contaminated fill material was imported to the site to build the athletic fields. The contaminated fill contains a number of constituents concerned. The main driver has been PCBs. However, there's chlorinated solvents, there's petroleum compounds, heavy metals and pesticides. So, the main drivers PCBs, but there are a number of contaminants within the fill material. The fill material does extend throughout the entirety of the fields, beneath the fields, but it also extends along the sloped and now vegetated areas surrounding the field as well, along all sides. The second bullet here reads heterogeneity of site impacts. Heterogeneity is really just a long word for something that's non-uniform, unpredictable. It's really the non-uniform nature of the site impacts that led us, at least in the beginning part of the project, to draw sometimes misleading but preliminary conclusions regarding the nature and extent of contamination. As you'll see in the coming slides, we have advanced over 300 borings across the site and have collected over 650 samples and roughly half of those samples are clean. Pretty surprising. What we're seeing, what we see a lot of times is when we have a clean sample, we initially thought that was favorable news for the project. Maybe it wasn't widespread. However, we have now discovered that it was really just a result of the non-uniform nature of the site impacts. In some areas, we can have a clean sample, but then five feet next to an area that has very high levels of impact. So, in summary, there's very little correlation between one area to another when it comes to site impacts. Groundwater compliance. So, our groundwater samples collected to date have shown that the impacts in soil have not migrated down to groundwater. There will be a requirement incorporated into our remediation action plan to do post-mediation groundwater monitoring to comply with Connecticut's regulations. However, given that the fields have been open to infiltration since 1960, since they've been constructed, you know, our results show that the contaminants are not leaching down into groundwater to levels that warrant remedial action. Another thing to consider is the regulatory into coordination required for a job like this. Given the fact that we have high levels of PCBs in the fill, we're not only required to coordinate with Connecticut DEEP, but also with the Environmental Protection Agency, or EPA. So, coordinating with multiple regulatory agencies, including some interdepartmental agencies at DEEP, is time-consuming. But by no means unwarranted, given the fact that this is a very complex and very large project site. And each assessment phase that we've gone through involves numerous steps, including work plan preparation, review of those work plans by the regulators, the investigation itself, laboratory testing, reporting, and then meeting with the regulators to discuss the results and also evaluate next steps. So, each assessment involves all those iterative steps. So, it's a time-consuming process. For both the high school and now Western Middle School, the easiest and fastest road to completion would have been to choose a remedy that was prescribed in default, meaning it didn't require any special approvals on behalf of the regulators. However, this route is by far the most expensive and destructive to the community when it comes to construction, truck idling, truck traffic, dust suppression, just general construction schedule. So, for that reason, we were tasked early on to assess a number of remedial alternatives that are based on risk-based strategies versus removing everything from the site. So, we've been evaluating remedial alternatives that involve the incorporation of engineered controls or protective caps that will exist between residual impacts and the surface and the public. These types of risk-based strategies involve considerably more effort on our part as consultants on the town as well as the regulators to render decision, hence the lengthy back-and-forth process and the need for a lot of sampling. So, jumping into assessment activities, people in attendance here are not meant to really decipher information that's presented on this slide. It's really just representative of the amount of samples that have been collected and the amount of data that's been generated. These are just nine of maybe 18 or 19 figures that are incorporated into our remedial action plan. A lot of samples, as I said, over 300 borings and 650 samples. I've created this next graphic to really illustrate best of our abilities, like what our data shows us. And this shows a number of things. The dots in red show PCBs above one parts per million, which is the residential direct exposure criteria in Connecticut. It also includes yellow dots. It shows PCBs above 50 parts per million. There are special handling requirements for those sort of PCB exceedances. And it shows white dots, which are soil samples that are clean, you know, soil samples that do not either contain PCBs or other non-PCB constituents concerned above the residential direct exposure criteria. And there's also blue dots, which are non-PCB impacts above the R deck, which is the short name for residential direct exposure criteria. So, this graphic shows us a few things. First, it shows us that, yeah, the contaminated fill is everywhere. And you see red dots north, south, east, west of the athletic fields. And it also shows that in the vegetated slopes, we also have contaminated fill material containing both PCBs and non-PCBs constituents concerned. It all shows that we have some hotspots with, you know, higher levels of PCBs and higher levels of contamination for lead, which we're going to be targeting as well. There are special handling requirements for the higher levels of contaminants. It also shows that we do have some small minor exceedances down here in this lower recreational area. So, this, I'm sure most of you know this, but this area to the northwest is about 15 to 20 feet lower than the athletic fields. And the sorts of deleterious materials that were identified beneath the athletic fields, the coal, the trash, the CND waste, that sort of waste was not identified down there. Moreover, PCBs were not identified down there. So, while there are some targeted excavations happening down in that recreational area, it's not a site-wide excavation like's happening for the athletic fields. Lastly, this figure shows, maybe a little tough to tell, but if you look at the outermost samples surrounding the athletic fields at the toe of the slope, all these borings came back with clean samples, samples below Connecticut's R deck. So, that was also made the last straw for us to ultimately agree on our remediation strategy. So, for projects like this, there's a requirement for us to perform what's called the remedial alternatives analysis, which qualitatively evaluates a number of remedial options. And those alternatives are evaluated a number of criteria like implementability, regulatory acceptance, cost, construction schedule, you know, to name a few. And through, you know, a number of these, at one point is up to 13 remedial alternatives, and through significant coordination with the town and the regulators at DEEP and EPA, our rap now incorporates a selected remedy, which is known as remedial alternative number two. Remedial alternative number two is essentially a site-wide where we have contaminated fill at the surface or within the top two feet. That fill is being removed across the site to a depth of two feet below grade surface. Following that excavation, there will be deeper excavations to target the higher levels of contaminants of either lead or PCBs above 10 parts per million. Following the excavation activities, clean fill will be brought in, and that clean fill, as well as in addition to the protective cover systems, will serve as the engineered controls to prevent exposure to the residual contamination that's going to be left in place. So, to reiterate, it's two feet across the site. Basically, it's the athletic fields and the vegetated slopes that are surrounding the athletic fields. PCBs above 10 regardless of depth. The purpose of this is to really significantly reduce the contaminant load across the site. And then following the excavation, both sidewall and bottom endpoint samples, a significant amount are going to be collected to confirm that the removal is done to project approvals and regulatory approvals. And as I mentioned, a series of protective cover systems, primarily the artificial turf field, will serve as the engineered controls preventing access to deeper soils. So, this alternative was selected because while it yields a similar reduction in toxicity and risk, it does come along with the pretty massive construction-related and disruptive community impacts, like construction traffic and truck idling and dust to be generated during construction. It also does provide a clean barrier between residual impacts and infected public and also meets the requirements of EPA's risk-based remediation standards. It's also effective and permanent in the long term. There will be, you know, significant site maintenance and inspection requirements coming along with the field upon completion, but this is a permanent remedy. And it's protective. And while it's obviously still expensive, it's considerably less expensive than the more aggressive remediation strategies. Here is a summary of our remedial terms analysis. I'm not going to spend a lot of time here. I presented a number of these in previous public meetings. But the main takeaway from this slide is that the construction schedule is expected to be about 144 days and the estimated budget is $19.2 million. These are preliminary engineering budgets based on, you know, pretty conservative cost estimates, but this number will be refined further once we start getting contractor bids. Now being shown is the proposed remedial excavation plan that's incorporated into our rap. The areas hatched in blue are the expected extents of the two-foot excavation that extending almost across the entire athletic fields, along with the sloped areas. And it also shows that we have a known hotspot that we're removing to achieve project approvals. And during construction, as we find more hotspots as part of our verification samples, those areas will also be removed regardless of depth. Any PCBs detected above 10 parts per million will be removed regardless of depth across the site. And as I mentioned, I think it's 650 verification samples are currently proposed. This slide shows the proposed protective cover systems or engineered controls that will be in place following remediation. The areas in red are the proposed artificial turf. The green shows the clean soil areas, which would be landscaped with either metal mix and/or trees, and the blue shows asphalt and/or concrete. This slide shows the details of each of the four protective cover systems or the engineered controls. And the details here are important, but the main takeaways from these slides is that each involves a minimum of two feet of clean material that will exist between the residual impacts left in place and the surface. Also, for each of these, a surface level of either artificial turf, topsoil, concrete or asphalt will remain above the proposed engineered controls to allow for maintenance to occur without releasing the engineered control. Turf material. So, we know considerable amount of effort went into the high school making this decision and we're not going to, we're trying to maintain consistency with the high school decision. So, there is a plan to use biro fill for the fill material. It's safe, low maintenance, allows for, you know, long playability. It's got a 16-year warranty. So, we're not looking to change things up from what was decisions made for the high school project. Tree warden coordination. We're working with Dr. Kramer, tree warden with Greenwich. We most recently spoke to them last week wherein a decision was made to engage in harvest, to do a tree survey, to evaluate the environmental impact of the trees to be removed in order to assess really the proper tree replacement protocols, number of trees and types of trees. So, we'll learn more in the coming weeks about what that tree planting plan will look like in the week's chat with the public. So, given this is a school and we have neighbors, obviously, there's going to be high sensitivity to dust suppression. So, we're going to be meticulous when it comes to minimizing dust. We're going to have water trucks actively spraying water on construction roads and throughout the project site. And we're also going to utilize these portable, they're called Buffalo turbine dust controllers that just pour water on active excavations, really knock down the dust. Additionally, we're going to have air monitoring stations set up anytime we're working on site. Multiple air monitoring stations are going to track dust. They're going to be equipped with telemetry. So, if any action levels are triggered, we'll know in real time. Our field staff will get the notification on their cellphone and instruct the contractor to do more dust suppression as needed. Our site plans also include sediment erosion control plans, which include requirements for a number of sediment best management practices or BNP's, including perimeter double rows of steel fencing backed by hay bales, other BNP's like rock blankets, erosion control blankets, slope stabilization in the protections, stock line protocols, construction interested protocols. And these plans have been submitted and reviewed by the engineering department and we've addressed their concerns. And the project will also involve obtaining a general permit for stormwater through DEP, which will require weekly monitoring and reporting. Project will also involve pre-stick and decontamination during construction. The main, it's pretty self-explanatory, but the intent is to, as needed, decontaminate any heavy equipment coming onto the site. This will involve the use of a stone construction entrance for the triaxle trucks. It will also involve the use of some sort of high-pressure wash or steam cleaner to remove contaminated soils from equipment. So, all vehicles, either bringing on, coming onto the site or leaving the site, will be decontaminated as necessary. And site access. This is a slide that's been presented before, but we're fortunate not to have the need to use the entrance to Western Middle School to the west. We will be expanding, improving the access road that exists to the northeast of the athletic fields for construction vehicles to enter next to the site.
Patrick, can I draw this to you? Okay. So, this is Patrick Haskell with AECom, and we were brought in because we've been doing the high school work and had some pretty serious schedule constraints there, having to work only in the summer and get a lot of work done. And so, Tony and Town asked us to come onboard to sort of help bring this engineering design that Langdon's completed to work with them and help bring this to to the real world, to the ground, you know, and make it happen this summer. Well, up here is sort of idealized schedule. It's not, there's, you know, some dates are real, like tonight. And the end of the public comment period is next Tuesday. And so, what we'll do is we'll work with Langdon to respond to comments and work with DEP on comment response and essentially just coordinate activities to get contractors in here, make sure they're qualified, get the bid process out so that we can get to work this summer. And that coordination involves, you know, reaching agreement. There's a lot of paperwork on the regulatory side to get approvals. There's permits to get situated. And what we try to do is work together as a team to figure out all the technical details that need to be incorporated into the bid process while, you know, the i's are being dotted and the t's are being crossed to get the program, you know, get boots on the ground and make this happen. You know, starting this summer, we want to mobilize the equipment and be out there working this summer so that we have all our processes in place before the kids come back in the fall and then continue working into the fall until the job's done.
Thanks, gentlemen. We will now begin the public portion of the evening. When your name is called, please approach the podium and feel free to make your comments or ask panel a question. We respectfully ask that you keep your comments to around three minutes each in order for us to hear from everyone that would like to speak. In an attempt to keep the program moving efficiently, I will also announce the next person on the list so they can be prepared to move closer to the podium. As a reminder, for those online watching on Zoom, your comments entered into the Q and A are part of public record. Once all of our in-person speakers have asked their questions, we will sift through the questions online to see if any additional questions have been unanswered. We will now start. Mr. Fred Camillo, followed by Mike Pocaccino.
Thank you, Jonathan. Good evening, everybody. Dr. Jones, Mr. Wilcox, officials from DEEP, EPA, Langdon, and AECom, as well as town representatives. I stand in strong support of the remediation plan. We, it goes without saying that we place great importance on education. We place great importance on public health, but we also place great importance on physical education and activity. And having spent decades and decades on that baseball diamond as a player, coach, and umpire, I won't say how many decades, but a lot of decades. If you had told me many years ago that these fields would be closed down for six years and two whole classes would go through Western Middle School without accessing the field and having to be bused all over town, I would have never believed you. So, it's not surprising to see all these positive comments and all the passion and support of this. So, again, I thank you so much for bringing it to this stage and know that the town stands 100% ready with you to push this over the goal line and across home plate. So, thank you very much.
Mike, you're up, and David Langhorn will be next.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. My name is Mike Pocaccino. Sometimes the kids call me Mr. Cappuccino, so I give you a little bit of leeway on that. I'm a former state representative for this district, for this community. I'm also the former chairman of the Neighborhood Association. I've served as a PTA president for the elementary school that feeds in here. I know these people very, very well. I sit on the board currently of Parks and Recreation. So I can tell you, and I've worked with DEEP when I was in Hartford, I know that the process is very long, but this process to get to this point has been ridiculous. These kids, I'm also the father of two kids, both accomplished baseball players who neither one, my oldest is a senior in high school at Greenwich High, my youngest is a freshman at senior, freshman at Greenwich High School. Neither one had the opportunity ever to set foot on the baseball field here at Western because of all of the issues that we've been going through. That's a travesty for my family, for those kids, and for every other child that has gone through this system. So this is an imperative moment that we've come to. You guys have done an amazing job. Langin is is incredible. We've gotten to the point where we have chosen the safest, and people need to recognize this before they come up and try to accuse us of not being safe, safest remediation process that we can possibly come to agreement upon. One that is, the EPA acknowledges that this is the safest route route for us to go. It will also be one of the quickest ways for us to get these kids back onto the field. The community is a hundred percent behind us, these people. Gordon Weinstein and his staff and faculty have done an amazing job, even these kids athletically involved. We are proud to have had state championship football team, golf team, and soccer teams this year. We have yet to see what our rugby team's going to do and our baseball team and our softball team. But we produce many, many fantastic student athletes. I mean, and the, and not allowing these kids the opportunity to be out there expressing themselves and showing how good they are and working on their crafts is a travesty. So we need to move forward with this exponentially. I know that you guys are going to do the right thing, give the regulatory approval, move forward with this to the Board of Education. I hope and plead that you lay some pipe down so that we can light this up after we cap it. We are going to have potentially the, one of the greatest sports complex that Greenwich has ever seen. Again, I serve on the Board of Parks and Recreation, I'm on the Field Committee. We have a low inventory right now of fields. If we are able to move forward with this and do things properly, our inventory will rise, the kids will have the opportunity to be out there competing, practicing their crafts, which inevitably will help most of those kids get into college. So please, I implore you, move forward with this, give the approval, we will support you a hundred percent of the way. Anything that you need, just give me a call. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mike. David, if you don't mind, for one second, we have an online comment from Steve Meskers, who says, I want to lend my support to the project as Steve, representative of the one hundred and fiftieth district. While the negotiated process was long and protracted, I think we have a tentative agreement that serves the community well, and I am anxious to get the project underway. Next is David, followed by Lucy Van Brockel.
Hi, my name is David Langhorn. I don't have anything like the credentials of the coach does, but here we go. I've had three children run through this school, my youngest is in eighth grade now. My daughter never saw the fields, my youngest son will never see the fields. My oldest son, who's now a sophomore in college, got one year out of it. So September sixteen, I believe, is when we finally got the shutdown process working. I am one hundred percent an advocate of let's go. And what worries me the most is that when you look at the high school, it was supposed to start in September, it was supposed to end in, start start in June when the kids got out and end in September, and we're all supposed to be done. It never ever looks like that, so I'm scared it's going to take longer than we anticipated. But I'm assuming that if we all get together, it opens up in June the construction. And by September, October of this year, we should be all ready to go. I'm, I'm hoping that that's the the outcome. One of the most important things that I've noticed over the time as we've watched this process go through painfully slow, which I don't blame anybody for, because I can understand that governments work slowly, is the kids have suffered the most. All these children are shipped everywhere, parents having to, not able to do sports with their children because their children have had to go to a different destination, they don't have the after-school buses and everything else. That's where the real punishments come from, not from the guys that are able to go and pick and collect their children after their sporting events, but the people that don't have that ability to do so. We have a dearth of athletic opportunities for our children here in the field area, whether it be from the littlest all the way through the softball or through soccer, all the way through baseball. One final question I would say is, is it possible that we can look at how you lay out those fields as we go forward? Is it possible that perhaps the concrete pathways should be made of a little bit different substance? So if the kids are in their spikes, they won't actually run into a concrete slab and become slippery, such as we see at Strazza? That might be something worth paying attention to. In the meantime, thank you, and I implore you to get this thing on the road.
Thank you, David. Lucy is up next, followed by Beth Aservo.
I am clearly not Lucy, I am her husband, and I am just here to express my gratitude for this. Like Mr. Langhorn and Mike Pacino and many others here, I'm sure. I had two kids go through this school, never once using the fields. Also, like many of these other parents, we went through the same thing with New Lead. So it's great to see you all here again. Thank you very much for all you're doing. We hope that, you know, this will be remedied in the hundred and forty-four days, I believe they said construction would take. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. Beth is up, and Grace Natali is next.
Hi, good evening. My name is Beth Aservo, and I'm a lifelong Greenwich resident. I'm here tonight to show my strong support of the field soil remediation project. I'm a parent of a sixth grader, spouse of a Western alum, and the current PTA co-president. Project has been thoroughly researched and analyzed, and it's long overdue to be completed. Many people stay or move to Greenwich to bring up their children in the Greenwich Public School system. It's an exceptional school system with caring and compassionate teachers and administration. While many in Greenwich can afford private schools, many choose the public school system because of the staff, academics, and even our school buildings. As Greenwich residents, we pride ourselves on our public school system. And while Western is an exceptional school, we are doing a huge disservice to our kids by not giving them a proper field. The current students have not had a field during their entire middle school. And for most kids, they also did not have access to outside play in the few years prior due to COVID. While we are at school for academics, a critical part of school and development is play and developing social and emotional behaviors. We are amid a national mental health crisis with high suicide rates for school-aged kids. There is way too much technology use and screen time. Having access to fields is critical to all of our children. Access to sports and fields is a well-needed outlet for kids. It not only impacts their mental health, but also transcends into impacting other parts of their lives, such as their academics. The kids need time outside to play, be it physical education or to play sports. Western is a Title I middle school, the only one in Greenwich, with an exceptional program and kids from all over town who want to come here. And yet, our students have had unequal access to fields and sports. The Western students deserve a school they can be proud of inside and out, a field where they can easily partake in school sports rather than schlepping, schlepping across town to other fields. A school where they can focus on their mental and physical health in addition to their education. All the legwork and research has been done, the plans are ready to go. Please do not continue to allow this injustice to occur, and please provide the approval we need to move forward with the overdue remediation to our fields. We need to move forward with this project now before more students are further impacted. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. Up next, after Grace will be Leslie Moriarty.
Good evening. My name is Grace Natali. I have been a Greenwich public school parent for nine years. And with Beth, I'm co-president of the WMS PTA. I'm here tonight with some of my fellow Wildcats, and I was hoping that anybody in this room that supports the project going forward, if you could please just show your support by standing so that everybody can see whether you're speaking tonight or not. Thank you. Approving this remediation project is the first step of what we hope is the last phase of this project. Let's please not delay it any longer. Please know that the Western PTA and our families are here to support our district in any way necessary to move this project forward. We appreciate the timely updates that are being shared with our school community. We want to encourage all groups, this community, the BOE, BT, DEEP, and federal local, federal and local officials, many of whom have been speaking and are in support today. Thank you. To continue to work together in a meaningful, transparent, and swift manner, we look forward to significant progress over the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. Up next, Leslie Moriarty, followed by Dr. Greg Kramer.
Good evening. I'm Leslie Moriarty. I'm a previous member of the Board of Education and was on that board when the contamination was found at the high school, so I feel like it's deja vu. I'm a current member of the Board of Estimate and Taxation, which is the finance board in this town, but tonight I'm speaking as an individual. I'm glad that we're here tonight to present comments on remedial action plan. I'm sure you have heard and will continue to hear a lot of comments about the length of time it took to get to tonight. This time's impacted our students, our families, and our communities. You're hearing a lot of the frustration, but we're ready to move ahead. I appreciate the efforts taken by our staff, the consultants, the state officials, and the federal officials to address the concerns for public health and safety. Our community has experienced with risk, risk-based strategies in addressing these types of contamination risks with the similar methodologies being used at the high school. I'm here tonight to show support for the remedial action plan as proposed and ask that it be approved for implementation starting this summer or even earlier. I want to thank again the administration, the consultants, Langin, and AECOM. Thank the DEP and the EPA for their time and attention and support.
Thank you, Leslie. Up next is Dr. Greg Kramer, followed by Ms. Karen Hirsch.
Hello, good evening, everybody. My name is Dr. Greg Kramer. I'm the tree warden and superintendent of Parks and Trees. Just wanted to thank you all for your time and your expertise. And I just wanted to say I look forward to working with you all together. I think we've accomplished a lot in the short amount of time projects involved me. And I'm looking forward to getting a beautiful landscape in that looks great, functions ecologically, and works well for everybody. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kramer. Up next is Karen Hirsch, followed by Blake Nattell.
Good evening. My name is Karen Hirsch. I'm a current member of the Board of Education and parent of two former Western Middle School students. My oldest is now a sophomore in college, and my younger student is a junior at Greenwich High School. Both are athletes. And while my oldest had access to the fields for one year of his time as a Western Wildcat, my youngest never had the opportunity to step foot on her home field at Western Middle School. I'm standing here tonight to support, to offer my full support for the recommendations in the remediation action plan put forth by the Greenwich Public Schools for the soil removal and cleanup of the fields at Western Middle School. Our middle school fields are used by the schools for the physical education programs, intramurals, interschool athletics teams, and other school events. The same fields are also used by the community for youth and adult athletic leagues and other community programs and events. In 2018, Greenwich Parks and Recreation, who manages and maintains Greenwich Public School fields, logged approximately six thousand hours of use a year on our middle school fields. And I'm sure that the usage has only increased in the past four years. In 2020, the town conducted an athletic field study, which only highlighted what many of us knew, that Greenwich has an insufficient number of athletic playing fields and that the existing fields are overused. Having access to Western's long closed fields would not only benefits the students, but the entire town by giving us access to more field time. That the fields at Western Middle School have been closed to the students in the community for over six years is unfathomable to me. Physical education is part of our required curriculum. And yet, the students at Western Middle School have been denied access to their fields, in effect, limiting what the options can be offered to them. Additionally, the students at Western have had to travel all over town in order for them to practice or play extracurricular sports. This is not only inequitable, as both of the other middle schools and towns have had access to their fields, but also has a major impact on our students in many other ways. Imagine not having the opportunity to play a championship game and win on your home field, or even host an outdoor school event. This lack of access can also negatively affect the ability to build a sense of community and school spirit and has also created a disparity for Western Middle School students when they head to Greenwich High School to compete for spots on high school athletic team rosters. So I'm here to stand up for the current and future students of Western Middle School, as well as the community at large in supporting the remediation action plan, which will help to create a safe, accessible, state-of-the-art field for Western Middle School and for town use, and which will also significantly improve field access for the community at large. As you can see, there's been an incredible amount of work put into this and tremendous community support for this project to move forward. So I'd want to close by saying thank you to all of those who've helped support, helped us move this project forward over the years. And at long last, the finish line is in sight. Please help us get over that final goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Up next is Blake Nattell, followed by Francia Alvarez.
Good evening. My name is Blake Nattell. I'm an eighth grader at Western Middle School. I have a unique perspective because I, this is my third year here, and I've never been able to use the fields. I asked to speak tonight in support of the remedial action plan for WMS fields that has been submitted to regulators. I want officials and our community to know that I and my graduate graduating class will be one of more than twelve hundred students who attended WMS and who were never able to use the WMS fields. To put it into context, these fields were closed on September first, twenty sixteen, the year that I started second grade. Five full cycles of students came to Western and left Western, so the fields ever being open for them. I realize that it is very important for all our safety that the environmental remediation process is thoughtful, deliberately deliberately done, and includes rounds of testing. However, please note that every year is another year in this, in this, in the life of this town's children who remonly wish to be able to enjoy access to the field during physical education, after-school events and activities, and on weekends for track meets, baseball practice, flag football, softball, lacrosse, and all the other sports that we are lucky to be able to play. I strongly urge the state and the town to act with further, without further delay on this proposed plan, plan for field remediation. Thank you.
Up next is Francia Alvarez, followed by Katie Yu.
Good evening. My name is Francia Alvarez. I'm on the Greenwich Tree Conservancy, I'm on the RTM, I'm on the Land use committee. And tonight I'm speaking as the advocacy chair for the Greenwich Tree Conservancy. The Governor's GC3 Council on Climate Change has a goal to reduce greenhouse gases and gas emissions and restore tree canopy. So every existing tree is important. The Greenwich Tree Conservancy is in support of the field remediation, but we'd also like to see as many trees as possible be saved based on their ecological benefits that they provide. Many trees were removed at the New Lebanon School, and the Greenwich Tree Conservancy does not want to see that again here. Out in the hall across the way, I had a very nice conversation, optimistic conversation with Patrick Haskell. And I was wondering if you just might mention briefly how you're going to be working with Dr. Kramer and working to save as many trees as possible. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, so there's, there are limited options for what can be done out there. But they, you know, what's being done initially is a, you know, Langin is pointing together a tree survey to identify the species that are out there and allow Dr. Kramer to make an inform, get informed, make an informed judgment about how how activities are performed. There are, you know, when, in in some cases, trees can be saved during remediation, you know, obviously in other cases, that's not possible. So when that, when the tree survey gets done, we'll be working with Dr. Kramer cooperatively to identify, you know, what is, what can be saved and what appropriate. appropriate mitigation measures can be done to restore, as he said, a nice landscape around these fields.
Thank you, Patrick. Up next is Katie Yu, followed by Lee Morgan.
Good evening. My name is Katie Yu. As I said, I am a mother of three children, very active with the PTA since 2010, past and proud Western Middle School PTA president. You know, it's honestly both amazing and appalling that I find myself in this position to speak tonight in advocacy of this long overdue remediation of Western Middle School's field in Greenwich. I recall speaking with Langen at the time. My oldest son had the bad fortune of entering Western Middle School in 2016, which was the year that the fields closed. I recall advocating for the quick remediation of the fields, and our community was energized and hopeful for a fast remediation that would allow Western students to run and play on the field during recess rather than being relegated to primarily playing on the blacktop every day. As parents, we laughed about the irony of living in a town called Greenwich. My son is now a senior at Greenwich High School, soon to be exiting the public school system, and he has yet to put a toe on this field. My younger son, who was six at the time, is now a sixth grader at Central Middle School. At the time, we had negotiated Western Middle School because of its fantastic staff and its support systems, but our younger son is an enthusiastic football player, and we didn't want to deprive him of the ability to run and play on the field. I truly grieve for the generations of kids who are unable to access Western's fields. These fields, which were used by kids across the district, they were one of the largest in Greenwich, and they were used extensively by all members of the community. There's no question that having no sports at all, limited education space, and being shipped all over town has had incredibly detrimental effects. Now, the BET has pledged to lend its support to funding what is necessary. I hope that I'm talking to the choir tonight, and in my opinion, this is absolutely necessary. Tonight, I'd just like to add my support for a safe and quick remediation, which will provide a state-of-the-art field for the school and the whole town, significantly improve field access for the entire town and for all sports. Please give the community and our kids back their fields. Thank you.
Up next is Lee Morgan, followed by Claire Kilgallen.
Good evening, everybody. I grew up here in town, and I still think it's a great town. My name is Lee Morgan, and my husband, John Black, who is traveling, could not be here tonight. But just a few words from him. He is the president of the Bank Raider Football Organization, as well as a member of the GYFL Board, and a coach within the bank organization. And most importantly, we are parents of a Western Middle School eighth grader and sixth grader. We wholeheartedly and 100% understand the importance of what needs to be done with the fields at Western. We advocate for the work that we're trying to get approved, and we'll do whatever is needed to support the overall cause. We cannot wait any longer for progress. The right time is now. Our children deserve better from us. The youth of our district needs their space back. They have persevered through difficult times, and for us to delay this project any longer is a disservice to them all. We feel it's necessary to clearly articulate messaging and ask how the community can best navigate the channels to get the fields in working order for both our youth at Western, as well as providing safe fields to support the youth programs on this side of town. My husband was at the Board of Ed meeting right before the pandemic, where fields were addressed for quite some time, and both sides argued their cases. The entire debate and controversy needs to be boiled down to common sense and thorough action. We need to put aside the noise to serve our youth. If we lead with the children, we can't make a bad decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lee. Up next is Claire Kilgallen, followed by Mr. Ryan Fazio.
Good evening. Thank you for coming to hear us tonight, and thank you for your help and the opportunity to speak. My name is Claire Kilgallen, and I live in Byram a few blocks away. In addition to being a parent, I'm a former PTA president of New Lebanon and Western Middle School PTA Council Facilities representative. I'll add to the comments of full support for a swift resolution to the plan so that this project can go out to bid and begin in spring. There are a few of us who were the class of 2016 entering here. My oldest's first day of sixth grade was the day in August 2016 when the school fields were closed. Since then, by my calculation, I thank Mr. Natale, our student here, but I'll add to that number, over 2,100 students since my son entered have been impacted. My oldest is now a senior at the high school, and it's sad to see that he's never stepped foot on Western fields. That's also true of his sophomore brother, and now my youngest, who is in seventh grade. You don't need to be an athletic team kid to be a kid who wants to play on a field. And I'll note besides all the other uses mentioned, it's a neighborhood field. I support the remedial alternative, too. It addresses the issues, it meets standards, and the project is sensitive to the surrounding Byram community of which I'm a resident. The project has the overwhelming support of not only the Byram neighborhood, but the entire town. You saw the evidence, the support evidenced by the presence of so many, including our elected representatives. Our finance board has been supportive of all appropriations for this project and have been standing at the ready to facilitate the necessary funding. My children's experience should not be the experience of any future Western students or the rest of the thousands of children in Byram and our town. Please move forward with all deliberate speed so that we can begin the work in the spring. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Claire. Up next is Mr. Ryan Fazio, followed by Suzanne Broadbent.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Fazio. I represent Greenwich in the State Senate. More importantly, I'm an alumnus of Western Middle School. My brothers are alumni. My mom was the president of the PTA. This school is very important to me. The fields were very important to me and my classmates, whether playing baseball or at recess or at PE. So the idea that 1,200 kids have not been able to access them is so maddening and frustrating. I'm very excited to see that we appear to be close to remediating the fields, and I want to echo the support of the community for an expeditious and safe remediation of these fields. I also stand happily ready and willing to support the process from the state legislature in any way possible with the state, local, and federal governments. And I always have an open door in order to discuss these issues and more, and hope this happens as soon as possible. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ryan. Up next is Suzanne Broadbent, followed by Elizabeth Broadbent.
Evening. Thank you, everyone, for being here and all the work that's gone into this already. My name is Suzanne Broadbent, and I'm a lifelong Greenwich resident, a proud alum of Western Middle School, and a parent of two children at Glenville Elementary School, who will be here in just a couple of short years. One of them will be speaking in just a moment. They are the fourth generation of our family to go through GPS, and you can say that we're pretty committed to the public school system here in town. But right now, I do believe we're failing to provide the students at WMS with appropriate recreational space. I grew up just a stone's throw away from the school, and I spent hours not only using the field as part of my middle school years, but before and after that for recreation, athletic games, and, you know, anything you could think of. We would even sled down some of those hills in the back there. Let's see, probably a little dangerous. But anyway, the athletic field at WMS belongs to this community, and I mean the school community, the local community, and the broader Greenwich community. We need to get this done, and we need to get it done soon. Even if the current proposed schedule goes off without a hitch, we'll be looking at, you know, still more students who don't have access to these fields. It really is a shame considering that some of the students who have attended Western Middle School also did not have the advantage of using the fields at Hamilton Avenue School when they were there. I know that was a different issue, but this is continuing and just underscores the unequal access that some of the students on this side of town have had compared to other schools. For the last 16 years, I've worked in the environmental engineering industry for firms similar to AECOM and Langen, so I have an appreciation for what needs to be done here and just how complex it can be. But tonight, I'm speaking as a parent of students and a member of this community, just underscoring our support for this project. I look forward to seeing this project come to fruition, not only for my children, but for the students who come in the years after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Up next is Elizabeth Broadbent, followed by Phil Tarantino.
Hello. I'm Elizabeth Broadbent, and I'm in fourth grade at Glenville Elementary School. I'm going to Western for middle school in under two years, and I know so many others that are going to Western, including my brother Charlie. Me and some of my friends, including my best friend, love to play softball, and someone in my class loves soccer. So many kids love sports and should be able to play them on the athletic fields if they choose to. All students should have an appropriate and safe place to play sports, and it would benefit all kids to be able to play on the athletic fields in middle school. As I said before, I'm going to Western in less than two years, and I would love to have the option to play on the athletic fields. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here about this issue.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Up next is Phil Tarantino, followed by Laura Mumolo.
Good evening. That's a tough act to follow. My name is Phil Tarantino. I'm a physical education teacher here at Western Middle School. I've been here for 22 years. I teach with Mr. Drew and Mr. Kalinsky. I would first like to start by thanking Dr. Jones and Langen, Ben Watson, along with Gordon Bynum Senior and our administration for the support in trying to get this project done. There's been so many challenges, but in the meetings, everybody is doing their best to make this happen. And there's various challenges with this that I know that they definitely put their best foot forward. So just to speak from a perspective of being like in the school and being part of this process, in September of 2016, Gordon called me into his office and was like, hey, we have some bad news. Now, Gordon, that could mean anything. But in this case, it was that we had no fields. And he's like, what are we going to do? And I'm like, you mean no fields like no fields? And he's like, we have no fields. But luckily, in working with Donald Moore in the town, we were able to do Strazza Field, which is across the street. So what we did was, as phys ed teacher, we rode bikes, and the kids ran from our school to Strazza Field. And in a short period, 42-minute periods, we did our best to implement the physical education curriculum, which is obviously super challenging. So at that time, they were testing the field, and fortunately, we were able to get a small portion back. And that was positive in that we were able to be back on campus, which allowed us to do, you know, like obviously more because we were here and it was less transition time. And then COVID hit, and so we didn't have the gym. So we lost the gym, and we had like a small portion of the field, so we used the tennis courts. And so the point I'm trying to make is for like seven years now, all it's been is we got to get it done for the kids, and the kids have been great, they've been resilient. And the staff here, meaning my colleagues and Gordon and administration, Dr. Johnson, it's been support, support, support to get this done and give the kids the best experience they can. What I think, you know, might be missed is like our school spirit, like our after-school sports are huge, meaning we have, like in a season, we'll have 200 of our kids try out for our sports teams. And what happens with them is we can't practice here. So like in the spring, like there's 11, 12-year-old kids getting on a bus just to go to practice, and they'll go to Tuffle Field again. Donald Moore and Tim Coughlin in the town were great in creating these sites for us. And our track team sort of practices on like this little patch of grass, but we can't have any home games. So these kids, where you want to talk about like school spirit, and if you ever came to one of our basketball games for like our championship, our tournament stuff, it's packed, and the kids can't wait to play in front of these kids, their peers. So it's been so impactful on our kids in so many ways. And it's just time. It's been enough. The kids have been resilient enough, and it's time. This is sort of what we believe here. As we take a negative, we got to turn it into a positive. So let's make this field the best field in Greenwich, the best field in this town. You could see the support of this community, and our kids deserve it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Beth. Up next is Laura Mumolo, followed by Donald Moore.
Good evening. I'm Laura Mumolo. My daughter goes to school here. She's in sixth grade. We moved here two years ago from New York City. And first, I want to say thank you so much for all the dedication and all the details you have thought about to really go into this project. I know this is not an easy project, and so I want to thank everybody who's been involved in this project. Never did I think when I left New York City, I was going to move to Greenwich and find a school without fields, but here we are. So that was a bit of a surprise, but I want to tell you that I really support this project. I can't imagine growing up in a town, going to a school, playing all the sports that I played, and not have a field in the back. Like, it's just crazy. But I want to tell you that I do fully support this project. So do all these people and so many people online. I beg you to keep this project on track, to be efficient, to look for efficiencies, to really be committed to what the end goal is, which is getting these children outdoors. These are our COVID babies. They've suffered enough. It's time to get them moving. And I want to say this. I really hope that we've learned something, and I'm going to challenge everybody in this room, including the people as elected officials. We knew that we dumped really bad things in two locations and probably several others from our incinerators and many other companies. In the 1950s, 60s, and 70s, there weren't laws that were put in place in an effort to protect our children, our ground, our groundwater. But we have laws in place now, and we need to be smarter about the land that we live on, the land that we send our children to school on. And that starts with everybody contributing to that vision. That vision is so important. And in fact, we got really lucky, and so did Greenwich High School get very lucky, that we found what was underneath the land, even though we knew it was there. And the other thing I want to say is this, we need to put the laws in place because if we don't, we're just going to continue to be in situations like that. And look what we are all doing to our children, and look at the cost involved to remediate things like this. We have to stop doing this, and we have to put a law in place that says you don't have to scratch the surface and say, oh, I think someone's, something's there, in an effort to start going digging. We should be testing the soil now in places we already knew we previously dumped in 1950, 60, and 70s. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Up next is Donald Moore, followed by Jennifer Young.
Good evening. I represent Greenwich Parks and Recreation, the Greenwich Department of Parks and Recreation Administration, and Scott Johnson, Chairman of the Board of Parks and Recreation, are in full support of the remedial action plan of Western Middle School. This field complex is diverse and has great flexibility to benefit a wide variety of sports and accommodate multiple users at a time. The parking in Western is good with a large parking lot across the street from the school to supplement onsite parking. The facility is close to both I-95 and US Route 1, making it easily accessible by car. Not only would Western be able to resume a full physical education athletics program on campus, the entire Greenwich sports community would benefit greatly as well. Prior to the closure of the fields at Western, Parks and Recreation would schedule about 1,900 hours of community use on the fields in addition to the school use. We anticipate gaining more than 1,900 hours of field time for community use once synthetic turf fields are in place at Western. The field complex currently has a 90-foot baseball diamond. Remediation and synthetic turfing will have numerous benefits. With artificial turf, the field would allow Greenwich High School baseball tryouts, practices, and games at varsity and sub-varsity levels. This is helpful as high school baseball begins practice in mid-March, and grass fields are rarely available. In addition to having a usable baseball field from mid-March to mid-November, the outfield area could be used for other sports. A field hockey field or a small-sized soccer field could easily be painted in the outfield. Field hockey should be played on synthetic turf, and the community needs more smaller-sized soccer fields, particularly on turf. The plan for the main field would provide for a variety of uses. This includes a full-size multi-sport field, including football, 11-D-11 soccer, boys and girls across, rugby, and flag football. The plan will include a combination 46-60 softball and 50-70 baseball field, which will be a huge benefit to Greenwich High School girls' softball for tryouts, practices, and games at all levels. which will be a huge benefit to Greenwich High School girls softball for tryouts, practices and games at all levels in the spring. Would also assist community softball and baseball in the summer. The town could also gain beneficial practice spaces. The former number two softball field here is to provide youth football, flag football and soccer practice spaces as well. The project will help ease some critical future field space needs. First, the construction of a new central middle school will create severe problems, not only for central athletics and PE, but also for many other community users who rely on this space. Ongoing and planned field maintenance projects and likely school building renovations will also require additional field space. Any additional field space, especially synthetic turf, will help to ease the overall shortage. Everyone wins. Therefore, Parks and Recreation fully supports the Western Middle School Fields Remediation Action Plan. Thank you.
Thank you Donald. Up next is Jennifer Young, followed by Christine Zillich.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jennifer Young and I'm the parent of two Western Middle School students. I am here in full support of the remediation plan and construction of artificial turf. As you know, the Western Middle School community has been without field access for over six years, damaging its sports programs and limiting its physical education space. Our kids have been forced from their home fields and bussed all over town to play. This has not only negatively impacted their overall middle school experience, but is inequitable, unfair and quite frankly discriminatory. We, all of us in this room, on this, at this podium and on this stage, have a duty to ensure that our community resources are equitably distributed throughout the community and that schools have similar outdoor amenities. A rounded education specifically includes access to opportunities outside of academics. Without that access, we are hamstringing the development and potential of every student on our campus. During the height of COVID, outdoor spaces remain one of the few locations people could social distance safely to maintain favorable health and quality of life. However, due to the permanent closure of its fields, students at Western and the surrounding communities were denied the benefits of that outdoor recreation and its varying health benefits, including mental wellbeing. Following the remediation, the design includes the installation of artificial turf. These types of turf are widely used successfully around the world for many sports and at many levels of performance. Moreover, experts in athletic field design believe that grass fields cannot support the high use we expect from our sports programs and that use will leave our fields in poor condition. Tax dollars will not be wasted on the maintenance of more grass fields and a synthetic turf will prevent the countless, countless, I have kids who play lots of sports in this town, countless rain outs due to poor drainage and maintenance, which plagues the majority of our fields in town today. I have, don't have high hopes that when this is approved, we're going to see this turnaround in 144 days and it's likely that the fields will be completed after both my children have graduated Western. But I nonetheless respectfully urge you to move forward immediately. Greenwich is well behind neighboring communities in terms of the quantity and the quality of our fields. The new field at Western Middle School will ensure that the athletic infrastructure meets the needs of our school and the growing community and can support multiple sports programs. Our student athletes for generations will be pleased and well served by this new state of the art field that both the school community and community at large could be proud to call home. Thank you.
Thank you Jennifer. Up next is Christine Zillich, followed by Laura Erickson.
Hi, good evening. I'm just a mom and I don't represent a board or, and I haven't written anything. I have three kids and I'm new to the community here. So many wonderful and articulate things have been said about the reasons why we all stand in support of this. I just think it feels a little weird to have to stand here and, and say that. So I have a seventh grader that's here. I have a fourth grader who'd be rising. It's my second school year in town. I moved here from Hong Kong where I spent 11 years. And I am also a bit dumbfounded that we have this situation of a school. Like I didn't really think that it could exist here. So I wish you all luck. I support a plan that is safe for the children. I would like to say, based on previous experience, I don't support remediation happening while those kids are in school. So I hope that that can be part of it. And these things usually do take longer than they're supposed to. But for all the reasons that were so articulately stated tonight, I hope we can move forward as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you Christine. Next is Laura Erickson, followed by Diego Sanchez.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Laura Erickson. And first I want to thank you for your time and attention that you're spending both this evening and all your efforts to date on this very important issue, as I think you've heard. I am a member of the Board of Education, excuse me, the Board of Estimate and Taxation, but I am speaking tonight as a community member, as a mom who spent a lot of time actually on those fields when my oldest son was in Cal Ripken. And I just wanted to lend my voice and strong support of the remedial action plan. In August of 2016, I was actually the Chair of the Board of Education when testing confirmed the presence of certain contaminants on these fields. Our interim school superintendent, Dr. Sal Corda, consulted with town leaders and department heads and made a rapid fire decision that the field should be closed in the best interest of the, for the safety of the kids and the community at large. The decision was made and executed literally in the week just before the start of school. And I do give credit to Gordon Beinstein and his entire staff for making that happen and Parks and Rec for making it work. It's truly, our town is very collaborative. We come together in times of crisis and it was a crisis. The board at the time was also wrestling with suboptimal fields at Hamilton Avenue School and the William Street Field being out of commission due to the new Lebanon school project. So it was particularly vexing to have the fields at Western Middle School also impacted. Our, excuse me, our town has demonstrated the capacity to execute projects of this magnitude. We did so at the site of the former Cosco Power Plant and we're doing so currently in a multi-year phase project at Greenwich High School. I believe this critical project, after six plus years and countless rounds of testing and discussion, needs to move forward. The community has been patient, thank you. But the students and the community deserved to have their playing fields restored in safe and expeditious manner. Thank you again.
Thank you Laura. Up next is Diego Sanchez, followed by our final speaker, Peter Quigley. Of course. Diego Sanchez. Okay, Peter, please.
I've learned so much tonight. I've written a lot of notes. I'm going to have to play this one by ear. I want to first of all, thank the Board of Education, all the people and parents that are here tonight. Certainly the DEP and the EPA and any other stakeholders that are here. I'm going to point a question to the people on the dais here. I want you to look at the community and please hear what they are saying. I've come four years in a place that the community has been trying to speak to these very issues. Mr. Rocox and I have had too many emails. He doesn't want to see another email from me. So that's okay, you can respond. But the point here is, look at the community. Now you might ask, who am I? I was here in this same auditorium eight years ago to Mr. Bernstein's comments. I was here maybe before Ms. Moriarty, certainly not before Ms. Tarkington was here, back in 2007 and 2008 as a member of District 7, who had become a Vice Chair of the Land Use Committee. I'll tell you who I am in a moment. I fully support this whole program. I only suggest that it might be, might be more than 20 million in the sense that you've got hotspots in this area that may require further digging. It's all about soil testing. And to the young lady who mentioned why the elected people aren't doing things, I've got to tell you, look at me. I've been doing this for 15 years on the RTM as a member of the First Harbor Commission, trying to clean up sites in this town and in other places. And it is very difficult when you don't get the community to come out and give you that support. I've been asked by a constituent here that came to us in the RTM Land Use Committee eight, nine years ago. Her name is Dawn Fortunato and she ought to get some credit. I don't know how much. She's pretty direct with people in getting this thing started with us. It wasn't just six or seven years. It's been about 10 or 11 years to get this thing going. So I am very pleased to hear where it is now. Here it was tonight, so I can eliminate the statements on the political process, what you have to do to get appropriations and funding. Who is Peter Quigley? I was here, I'm a 22 year resident. For 15 years, I've been on and off the RTM as a Vice Chair of the Land Use Committee, first a member of the First Harbor Commission, trying to get these, I was a point person on land use for the environmental water management. There's still flooding here, water management and environmental and land use, proper land use, maintaining a historic scale of this town and working at it for 15 years. Okay? So I'll go on here. I think the, I was going to talk about the funding process, which is the most important, but interestingly, as they came back, I'm now District 3, District 3, I'm in Chickahominy. Come back last fall. I don't know why I was put on Parks and Recreation Committee, but I'm on Parks and Recreation. That's why I'm here tonight. I wanted to hear the community coming out. I knew you were going to come out. And we've been trying to do this, forget the seven years, I've probably been here 12 years. The first time in this auditorium was about eight years ago and in front of Langen. And the MISA project, as Ms. Moriarty knows, I was there in 2008 and 09, talking to a guy by the name of Joe Ross, who was then a Vice President of ICOM, but he was also the Chairman of the Building Committee for the High School MISA Project. I'll move on to a couple of suggestions and considerations if I can, if you allow. Those years make it very difficult to do things in three minutes, but I'll try to be brief here. The cleanup process, you want to use natural grass, not artificial turf because of the chemicals in the turf. People are sighing about this. This whole project is about the health and the safety of not only the students, but everybody that's in the site and to any place that has public, a public, I won't say congestion, but has public access. You want these sites to be clean. So it might not just be an expense and how quick it's done. You got to be making sure it's done right. Langen's created a beautiful plan here, no question. And I just hope the funding is there if they run into these hotspots. However, to Mr. Fazio, if he's still here, you raise your hand, comes in here. The, the issue, having been in this thing for 15 years, is that the state law needs new regulations to deal with soil testing and not to residential soil testing at these public sites. The case of one place I was in, it was actually a brown field. And they're dealing with residential, going down five inches or even five feet, when you have to go down to where this carcinogenic material lies into a certain degree. And that sometimes can be 10, 15, maybe even 20 feet. So to Langen's responsibility, it's just to make sure these hotspots are cleaned out and whatever is being capped is done as deep and far down as you can do. And honestly, it probably should be the EPA's responsibility. What's going on here, State of Connecticut, is that the standards of the Clean Water Act and the Toxic Substance Act are federal laws. Laws that were created because of things called the Love Canal. They are federal laws. The EPA has to come in for oversight, make sure those particular standards are being met. Because the state, we don't believe, as a group of us don't believe, legislation is serious and deep enough to be able to give protection at these public sites. I won't mention the amount of impact it has. You've all indicated, students, teachers. How about the teachers that have to be here and the coaches and everybody else? You want to make sure they're on clean soil. I'll leave it at that. I'm glad to see everything's moving along, at least in the funding and appropriations in front of the RTM. It's a very tedious process in this town and why it takes as long as it does and it probably shouldn't, but it does. And things do seem to be moving along there. To ICOM, having lived through these things since 2008 and the MISA project, they have a mixed history of soil testing, as does the DEP in my opinion. And I'm just a non-expert, just an opinion who's studied this pretty deeply. And I've been there with the Joe Rosses and the Steve Andersons and Leslie, through it all and the beginning of the MISA project. I'm glad things have moved to a point right now that this is all going to be taken care of. And I do hope it's, it's swiftly, but you have to make sure it's been done right. Also, just one suggestion, there's a company called Clean Earth. It's a pretty good vendor. If you ever need someone to check, I'm putting Clean Earth back in, into the soil here. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Don't mind one second. There's a gentleman in the back. Didn't sign up cheap, would like to speak. Would you like to approach? Let's see, why not? Please identify yourself.
Good evening. My name is Donna Gaddio Sozio. I'm from District 9. I'm talking on, you know, on, not on behalf of the district, but myself. I have a few questions and I think it will help clarify the process for the people in the audience. Okay. First of all, I want to thank you for the work you've done. I've been following this all along and I'm so glad we're at a point where we see a resolution in sight. But I'd like to explore the timeline because I know we want to get this, I'm assuming for this summer. Okay, so it's going to go out to bid. When do we expect those bids to be back?
At least remember to press the button.
Yep, the schedule is really dependent on, once we have substantive approval from the agencies and, and worked out all the permitting requirements and sufficient to be able to define the work for the contractors, it will go out to bid. We're going to, we're, we're talking right now about a pre-qualification program. So we have an expedited bidding process. We don't have to go, you know, we'll, we'll narrow, we won't have 20 bidders coming in. We'll have a narrowed down list. And that will allow us to know that we have, have people in place who are capable of doing the work, who are committed to doing the work. They've gone through the pre-qualification process and once that, and so then we run the bid process takes, you know, takes them four to six weeks of the bid process and there's a contracting element. The, by doing pre-qualification, the contract is done in advance. So it makes the process about a two month process. We're hoping to be able to do that. We're planning to be able to do that this spring so that we can get to work in the summer.
So we're talking about April. And the second component is, was this in capital budget? I, I don't think we had a number on it, correct, at that point? So it hasn't been budgeted in our capital project at this point, correct?
We were initially funded $2 million to get started on the work. There's another $8 million that was funded. So we have the money to at least get this project started right now.
Okay, so then the third is, when will we be able to bring it to the BET and the RTM? Because I am so for this. I want to see this move. So how do I help you get this moved through funding? I, that's a given. But will we see it as a special appropriation? And when do you think it will hit the BET?
Until we get through the budget process for this, this school year, I think we'll, we'll see how that plays out. We were always, we're, we're very confident BET has said, we can come for, go for an interim at any point in time as soon as we're ready. Right now, we can actually get started. We have funding to get started. So we're in a very, very good place and we feel very confident that the BET supports this work.
So you don't think it will be a separate appropriation? You're not sure?
Well, so we've gone back and forth the last couple of years. And again, that's way out of my league, you know, you're talking about the town financing. So last year, the board approached it where we were happy to go for an interim when we were ready. The first selectman actually kept the $8 million in. My understanding was to help, you know, go ahead and plan for this financially. So something like that could happen again this year, but until we get through the process, we won't know. But we're always prepared to go for an interim and feel like we have that support to move the project forward.
Yeah, please go for an interim. So we get it done this summer. I'd be happy to vote for it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Peter Alexander, practicing landscape architect and one of my first projects was the Love Canal you just mentioned. Cause I specialize in brown stuff and so forth. And this is very exciting. I want to look forward. I really think it's terrific to have so much support that doesn't often happen. And the fact that we're talking about these athletic fields, I couldn't resist. The 1979 is Love Canal. When it happened, there were all 55 gallon drums that were covered over during World War II. And I was the first consultant there and I met the two. And I was the first consultant there, and I met the two women that caused it because there were, you know, Little League goes two years. And there was one gal who's son was in the second year, and another gal whose son was in his first year, Little League, same two-year thing, and second base disappeared. And the new mother said, what was that? And it was, oh, don't worry, because they had wheelbarrows, brought it in, and covered it over, and put the second base back in. And we've come a long way since then, for sure. But you mentioned earlier the water table. The hydrostatic pressure, have you measured that? Have you gotten the direction of the runoff, subsurface runoff? And if it reacts to the hydrostatic pressure from storms?
So groundwater beneath the site, the depth varies, but it's approximately fifteen feet below the, the most upgrading areas, the elevated, the athletic fields. Groundwater flows to the southeast. Overland flow, it also varies. It follows, obviously, topographic pathways, but they flow in all directions off the fields and are collected by stormwater infrastructure that drains the wells.
Have you been given permission to test downstream from off the site?
So we have wells across the site, in the main hotspot areas, as well as upgrading and downgrading. And fortunately, all those wells show that the impacts are not leaching to groundwater.
Have you tested down off the site?
We've only tested onsite. We have not done any wells or sampling off the site.
Okay, you might consider that for the future. I'm, I'm not trying to be an umpire. I'm trying to give you some suggestions. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is that I would like to hear or get some support for voluntary analysis by people who have been to school here and what their cancer rate is at present, the ones that used this site from the beginning. I think it can be anonymous. It can be very careful, but I think that would be a good statistic to know to plan for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Joe, I'm sorry. There's one more question online. Mike Antonaccio is is monitoring our questions asked, and Mike, can you please ask the question?
Sure. This question is from Cliff Fentner, and his question is, how was the cost of the new dirt determined?
I can deal with that. So there's a variety of different types of materials being brought back into the site as import once the remediation is complete. The majority of it is either, it's clean fill. It's either stone or clean soil that'll be certified clean based on analytical testing. There's also drainage aggregate, probably about ten thousand yards going beneath the fields, and there's maybe another thousand or two of finishing stone. There's different unit rates for each of these items. They're including our wrap. It's probably about forty, fifty dollars per yard for the clean fill, like fifty to sixty dollars per cubic yard for the drainage aggregate, and the most expensive item is the finishing stone, which is probably around seventy-five dollars per cubic yard.
Thank you, Ryan. Well, now, oh, yes, sir.
Go back a minute and clarify. Did you say the groundwater is unimpacted?
I suggested groundwater is not impacted to a level that warrant remedial action, perhaps that nuance was needed. Thank you.
There is some impact.
There are, yeah. There are some, you know, contaminants within the groundwater, and those, those, those groundwater wells have been sampled on, you know, quarterly basis. Now, while there are detections of contaminants in the groundwater, considering the site's been open to infiltrations for decades, for sixty years, there's a alternative means of achieving compliance with the state standards, given that infiltration has been taking place. So there is a requirement for some post-mediation groundwater to push reach groundwater monitoring to confirm that, but there's, as of right now, no need to address groundwater issues.
Thank you, Ryan. Our final speaker tonight will be our new Board Chair, Mr. Joe Kelly.
Hello. Thank you for that. Joe Kelly, your new Board Chair. I'd like to speak of the power of the hundred and seventeen. A hundred and seventeen people showed up this evening to defend this position, to talk about how we're in favor of this. The same hundred and seventeen people showed up seven years ago, plus many, many more. The same hundred and seventeen people showed up at multiple Board of Ed meetings to defend and to support our decision to move forward on this project. The same hundred and seventeen people, two years ago, showed up at multiple gatherings, showed up at countless events. We're here to support time and time again. The same hundred and seventeen people and dozens spoke this evening. They gave powerful arguments. They gave support. This town, so many of them had been there early on. That's, a hundred and seventeen was more than a hundred and seventeen. It was many more than a hundred and seventeen, but they just came and they, after seven years of this, this marathon, it, it took a long time, but we had to do what we had to do. The power of those people, the steel of those hundred and seventeen that are here tonight, that stayed and came again and again and again, should not just be taking on their word tonight, but multiply that by the ten meetings they've already been at, twenty meetings they've already been at, gatherings, the support, the conversations they've had with their community. Amplify their words tonight, amplify their presence to more than a hundred and seventeen. Remember the hundreds that have not shown up tonight because they, well, they kind of gave up. We've asked them to show up time and time again, and they showed up, and they just gave up, but not the hundred and seventeen that showed up tonight. Thank you, everyone who showed up tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. We have now exhausted the list of public speakers and questions online. We will now ask Dr. Jones for closing remarks.
I think so many of you have been here for two and a half hours, that all I really want to say in closing, Joe, you did such a good job, is thank you so much again for sending letters, for showing up, for being here to really give your thoughts on this project. We are so appreciative, and we cannot wait to get the fields back open for our children. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. The recording of this public meeting will be available on the district's YouTube channel tomorrow. And all corresponding handouts will be available on the district's website. This concludes the Western Middle School Soil Remediation Project Public Meeting. Thank you and good night.